Have everybody, please, rise. Dear God, today as the session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in this decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the state of wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. We'll now say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance, supply, United States of America, and to the republic for which stands my nation under God, with visible liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Millinazzo.
Here.
Councilor Noon.
Here.
Mayor Samaras.
Yeah.
Councilor Cirillo.
Here.
Councilor Conway.
Here.
Councilor Elliott.
Here.
Councilor Leahy.
Here.
Councilor Mercia.
Yeah, here.
Nine present.
Thank you. Next, we have the minutes of the senior citizens of the, yes, senior citizens subcommittee of March 12th and the city council meeting on March 12th for acceptance. I need a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second. And Councilor Cirillo, second by Councilor Mercia. Thank you. Next, we have communication from the city manager. Motion response is the first one. It's motion response, police retiree detail. And it's Mayor Samaras and Leahy. Council Leahy? Pull this up, but my computer's a little behind, but I think it's a good thing, right? It's gonna move forward and could you just speak about?
Sure. Thank you and through you to the council. The response addresses motions that have been filed by Councilor Leahy and Mayor Samaras. I do want to also state that Councilor Conway had spoken about this some months ago with me again, exploring that at the time. We didn't have a permanent chief in place and there wasn't, there seemed to be a need to get further information on this. And there's, there were a number of issues and concerns, you know, namely, what about if an officer who's retired gets injured? What about training? What about firearms and so forth? But as this was researched, we were referred to the Cambridge model and the law department did look at that and I think some of that information is in here. And so Chief Richardson is in full support of this at this point. As the communication does explain, in the weeks to come, negotiations will have to occur with both of our unions. You know, in principle, it's my understanding, speaking to the chief and to some of the union leaders, there's not an objection provided the language is clear that they, there has to be a need, in other words, active police officers would be considered first and then it would go to this issue, you know, and looking to that. And so the law department has put together the request. Under state law, you can file a home petition and this vote has been prepared in the, assuming the council supports that. One of the considerations as well, and this I spoke to the councils who filed this as well as Councilor Conway, is that, you know, as we're getting further into construction coming up in the next several years here, filling details is also going to be another challenge. There are times that it's a challenge right now, but once we have all the roadwork beginning, whether it's Lord Overpass or Route 38 and the bridges that do require details, that's a lot of details to be assigning on long-term projects as well as our regular projects. So that's another consideration. I did have occasion to speak with a couple of municipal leaders. You know, I know some of those communities are experiencing the same thing in that they're having a tough time filling details and so they have gone to the retired officers model. And so this is, this is the recommendation coming forward from that, from those, the motions and the conversations. As I said, after having looked at it, the police department, the chief and his team are in support and in pursuing the model. Of course, O'Connor, the solicitor, could speak more in detail regarding the Cambridge model or other concerns.
Well, it'll go forward and I think it's a good plan. Like you said, fill in those details, especially in the next few years with the upcoming construction across the city. It's good to have Lowell guys working the details. And it is a concern across the Commonwealth. You know, different communities have trouble and sometimes we'll have Lowell policemen going to Drake it, we'll have Drake it policemen coming to Lowell. So I think this is a good thing for everybody, it benefits everybody involved. And like you said, we'll work out the language. They're responsible for insurance and training and stuff like that. So I think it's a win all around. So thank you for the recommendation.
And I do believe that based on conversations with the chief, that these officers would not be assigned to bars or things where there's, they would be using active police for those types of assignments.
Right, right. And it's understood that, you know, they, all active policemen get the first.
Correct. That language is yet to be negotiated, but the law department will expect to engage in those negotiations with the leadership of each union.
Yeah. And I think it's understood. And it's a good thing too, because some of these guys, I know they're trying to make extra money for the families and things like that, but sometimes, you know, they need a break too where they're working all day and then they try to do too many details. It gives them a chance to just take a break and get some rest and then, you know, there's gonna be more work coming down the road. So, thank you. Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a very good report. I wanna commend Councilor Leahy and Mayor Samaras and also Councilor Conway for trying to put this motion on. It's important because, you know, with all the manager indicated, with all the projects that's coming up for the city, either be the high school or the Lord Overpass and so many other projects. Who better knowing the layout of the city than the retired officers from, you know, the area? And so also I'm happy too that, you know, before doing things, that the managers and administration reach out to the superior and the patrolman union and good to hear that their support of this requires, I mean, of this plan. So it's great work. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanna thank the city manager, because when I asked for this home rule petition, I had discussions and we talked about the future, future of construction in the city of Lowell and this would not impact active police officers, but would support them when there was a need. And what we're doing, we're giving, we're having trained personnel, people who know how to do the job, fill in these positions. It just makes this a better city, a safer city. So I wanna thank the city manager for that. I'll set this issue. Thank you. Next is the homeless and sustainable housing. Councilor Cirillo.
Hi, yes, thank you. This is an excellent report and I like that we looked at the city of Worcester who had a similar mission last year and that we have such fantastic partners in the working group. So this is an excellent report. Thank you.
Councilman Millinazzo.
Thank you. I agree with my colleague, Councilor Cirillo. It is a very good report. I would just request the manager look at trying to bring more diversity to the working group. Again, looking at the CMAA or the Coalition for Better Acre or others in the community that obviously found an interest in housing sustainability and so forth. I would just ask that we look at expanding the working group to include some more diversity, if we could.
All right, thank you. Madam Manager, then.
Thank you. Thank you and through you to the council. The working group, which will start meeting next week and we look forward to having a plan by the end of July, will be utilizing other members of the community. There will be two subcommittees, one that has to do with crisis in housing and the other is sustainable housing. And so there, we, beyond what you see as far as the working group, we would extend the invitation, appreciate the input from other community members as well. And CMAA and CBA are on the list for that.
Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Manager, good motion and very quick respond, quick formation of the working group. I saw some of the working group last week, like, wow, that quick? So it's a good work. It's really good work. And I think Councilman Millinazzo is correct. He's looking at it as like, boom, the only two organizations now are on it, which is CMA and CBA. I know that CMA do not provide housing and all that. They may be able to give some input and help.
Yes.
As best they can. I know CBA is one of the agencies that provide affordable housings, you know, the invitations to them also will be, it look, it look much bigger. So if you can do that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, we will do that. And let me just also stay by way, state by way of background. Going back to last summer, we have been working with people throughout the community, the administration, the police department, planning and development on this issue, homelessness and the impact, as well as, you know, providing sustainable housing. One of the things that we discovered, especially working with planning and development, is the shelter model, which is dates back to somewhere in the 1970s, is outdated and it's evidenced by the fact that the federal government has backed away from funding shelters. They are inclined to fund sustainable housing, meaning as we've done both on the state and federal level, when families find themselves homeless, we've done a good job of getting families out of the motels and hotels and getting them into housing with a rapid housing response. But the resources have not been there for the single individual homeless. And so the federal government has stopped supporting those, which makes it not only an outdated model, but one of the things we're looking at is what's going to be a better way to help homeless people and to give them not just sustainable housing, but wraparound services, whether it has to do with addiction or mental health, because that is definitely lacking under the current shelter model. So we're looking across the board. This has been working, we've been working on this for several months now. And the motion updating the 10-year plan, this was to inform that this will be part of the response, hopefully for a successful solution. And we did look at the city of Worcester and what they have done and they had very similar challenges, very similar problems and have created over 100 sustainable units of housing for their homeless population. And so we're utilizing, you know, similar consultants as well as, I do wanna say that the executive director of the ownership of the shelter, SMOC, is part of the group and wants to work with the group as far as moving forward. So, and in addition to that, we would be looking at those homeless individuals who are living outside, maybe not in a shelter, as well as the schoolchildren in this, for that, the superintendent is on the working group. So it's, it's a work in progress. We'll keep you posted as we move forward. But the, the goal is to have a plan by the end of July and to implement the plan.
Councilman Millinazzo.
Just, thank you. Just one minor point. I would recommend, Madam Manager, that you change Jim Cook's affiliation to the LDFC, Lowell Development Financial Corporation, since they do have a housing financing program that they can certainly bring to this discussion. And I wouldn't want people to say the Lowell plan has two seats.
Sure.
On the, on the working group. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next motion is bike sharing. Kennedy, Cirillo. Councilor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Manager, for the report. I think it's a very good report. I'm happy to see that we'll be kicking this off pretty soon to you. Are you looking for a vote from this council or are you just ready to proceed on the 2nd of April? Or rather, is the company ready to proceed on?
Yeah, the company is ready to proceed. This goes back to the vote that was taken, actually it was last year, in 2018, when we addressed that, researched the companies and the opportunities. I know the motion spoke to OFO, but the working group went to great length to research the companies, looking at other cities who have had them. And so the decision was for the VO Ride system. Representatives are here tonight from VO Ride. I think they actually have a bicycle, but we did want to make the council aware that there will be a ribbon cutting, as it were, two weeks from tonight, out in, before the city council meeting. And just to, again, bring current the council as to what's happened with regard to the motion. I will hear the bicycle right now.
I think, as far as OFO goes, I think OFO looked pretty good last year. But I think that they're a Chinese company and I think they've left the country.
They have left the country. So OFO wasn't, that was the nature of the motion, but they weren't able to do this because they weren't doing it anymore in the country. You're correct. OFO was a dockless bike system and so the working group did a good job and they researched as many companies. There aren't as many as you think and some, one company is no longer in business and so, and worked with VO and chose VO. VO was also in Nashua and New Hampshire and other cities as well. And drew upon what their experience has been with the, with the dockless bike ride. And as I said, representatives are here tonight. If anyone has specific questions for them.
Maybe they could just give the city council just a quick overview of.
Sure. Would you like to come forward and speak about the, if you'd just state your name as well?
So, hello, everyone. My name is Ezra Richardson. I am the VO Ride fleet coordinator and manager of the bike share system in Nashua, New Hampshire. And I will be operating on the ground in Lowell and taking the lead role here. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
And we also have Jared Alves from Planning and Development. Jared, I don't know if you can speak to the program, how it came about that this company was chosen and what you envision.
Absolutely. So the initiative to get dockless bike share underway started with that motion that we had back in January of 2018. At that point, a working group was formed to evaluate best practices in dockless bike share. These systems were rolling out kind of around the country and many different cities in Massachusetts and communities in Massachusetts were starting to work with them as well. Ultimately, an RFP was produced in May of last year. That RFP received four responses, VO Ride being one of them. They scored the highest of the four groups and we ultimately executed an agreement with VO Ride in October of last year, late October of last year, understanding that winter weather would soon be upon us at that point. We thought that it made most sense to start in the warmer weather and have a strong launch at the beginning. And so now, here we are today, just a couple of weeks before launch and come April, we'll have bikes on the street.
And so you'll be starting off with 170 bikes? Is that correct?
Yes. We have one of them here, 107, 180 total.
Yeah.
Most of which will be active on the city streets. We are working with the University of Lowell, the UMass Lowell campus, as well as other university entities. I believe there's one more.
Middlesex. Middlesex Community College.
Yes. So we wanna make sure bikes are available for those students as well.
Okay. And what about picking up the bikes? I mean, this is a dockless program and so in some communities, from time to time, there's, well, I think down in the greater Boston area, there's been difficulties because some communities have dockless programs and some have dock programs. And so, but people ride bikes into different communities and leave them there. So for instance, you might, you might take a dockless bike and ride it into a community that had a docking program and then that creates a problem in that community, which shouldn't happen here because we're a little bit isolated, I think.
Yes.
In terms of the communities around us. But could you just speak to how the, what will be the level of maintenance that you'll have in terms of picking up the bikes? Because from time to time, there may be a bike that might stay in a, in a neighborhood where it's, where it's not wanted. And so how would they go about getting rid of that bike? Or how will you go about getting rid of that bike?
Well, the operations are done primarily by VO Ride. We have a team, myself included, who rebalances the bikes and we make sure that the bikes are in appropriate locations, also the locations that promote ridership, that allow riders to access them the easiest. We have a report system, an in-app reporting system that allows a user to essentially say the bike is A, broken, or the bike is B, not in the right spot. So we pay close attention to each community's specific needs and make sure that those, certain issues are addressed quickly. We, within general business hours, respond in two hours or less. So we certainly make sure that the bikes are within the city limits. That said, we also use what's called a geofence, a digital boundary, that doesn't allow bikes outside of it, doesn't allow bikes to end a ride outside. It's quite a strong incentive for a user to keep a bike within that boundary. And we are working closely with the city and the university to make sure that the geofence is designed appropriately for Lowell.
Okay.
Yes.
And how long have you been operating in Nashua?
Me, the program has been in Nashua since last June.
It's working without a hitch in Nashua?
Quite so, yes. I've been the manager there for quite a few months now and things have been slow over the winter, but it was very successful on the launch and leading right up to when we decided to store bikes for the safety of the bicycles and the snow removal.
Right. So that's what you'll do here? There'll be a point in time in, I don't know, maybe November or December, where you'll take the bikes off the road for the winter? Or do they, or do you run it right through the winter?
It largely depends on the ridership and the unique community here. If there's demand for bicycles through the winter, we wanna make sure that we can supply the bicycles available for those riders.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I look forward to April 2nd.
You all said? Councilor Cirillo and Councilor Conway.
Hi, yes, thank you. This is a fantastic motion response. And I'm very excited to have the bike share program in Lowell. I think it's going to make for a healthy community, a healthier community and on many levels. And I will absolutely be at the ribbon cutting on the, on the 2nd. So thank you. The bikes look great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilor Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the public that's listening now, if we could just clear up a couple of points. The, are you able to track these bikes somehow? In other words, if it's just dropped off somewhere in front of Mr. Mayor Samaras's house, how would, how would someone know that it's just dropped there? Is there?
Each lock, each individual bike.
Okay.
Has a GPS unit in the lock. We are able to see and track each bike, specifically just where it ends, where the ride ends.
Okay.
So if the bike ends up in an inappropriate area, we address it.
So you have approximately, you're saying in two hours, you could, you could find that, you could pick that bike up within the two hours? Is that correct?
Most definitely, within normal business hours, yes.
Now, also, the age limit, we, could you tell the public about the age limit here on these bikes?
So within our user agreement, we ask that each user follow the local ordinances for the state of Massachusetts and the city of Lowell, I believe it's 16. And our user agreement asks that the user receive consent for 16 and younger and 16 and older, such as high school students, are free to use the system.
16 and under, would they need to wear a helmet or is that just an optional thing?
So we provide, the user agreement does specify that the rider wear a helmet, if that is the local ordinance or law. We provide in-app messaging that promotes safety and asks the user to follow those laws. We also provide wording on the bikes.
Do you have any kind of, especially for the younger rider, do you have some type of a training program that might be available so that they could, you know, whether it's a, an hour or two hour, whatever it may be, to introduce them to the bikes? And I'm, obviously kids have bikes, I'm not saying that, but would, we also dealing with a different, a different environment. If you're taking bikes and you're driving them all over the city, it's, it's a lot different. So would there, would there be some type of a training program you have for the, for the youth at all?
Most definitely, Councilor. The, the in-app messaging goes as far as how to use our system. And the, the part where I engage and adapt to the community is hearing your requests for training and general bike safety, which I take the lead on and hopefully collaborate with some local businesses, such as a bike shop, to get a ride going or a training, yes.
And something that, that we prepared in advance of launch, the city's prepared, is a list of any number of local organizations that VO Ride may not be immediately aware of, that they should be working with, whether these are entities where bikes may end up, such as the university, but also Lowell General and other sites around the city. Beyond that, other organizations that may have clientele that, you know, could benefit from this service or that, you know, they may wanna spread the word to the people that they work with or their customers in a way to, I think what we'd all like to see is bike share be successful and so to the extent that the city can be a partner with, with VO Ride. We're trying to make sure that they're, have the resources that they need, the local knowledge that we have to start, that they will develop over time.
Okay. Just, just one more question. And you say that you have the program in Nashua now.
Yes.
How many, how many bikes are you actually utilizing in Nashua at this point? Because you were talking about 180 in Lowell, is that correct?
Yes, to begin with, yes.
Okay. And how many do you have in Nashua at this point?
The cap is 200. That is the number of active bikes available. We downsized the fleet to 30 bikes through the winter.
Okay. So during the, during the good weather, are the, would you say 300, 300 being used?
No, 200 total.
200. Are they being used?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
By all means, yes.
It's something that I'm really excited to see is the access, the data reports that VO Ride produces and sends to show you heat maps of where people are riding their bikes, where bikes are being used, because that could ultimately help us think through, you know, any sorts of decisions we make about bikes in the city in the future. Something, just to go back to an earlier question as well, is I spoke with my counterpart at Nashua, their transportation planner, who has been acting as their liaison with VO Ride. And she is very thrilled with working with them and found that that data was very helpful for, for just even sharing with, internally with different city departments and that their response times have been great to when any sort of issues and things have, have come up as, you know, things invariably will happen over the course of a year, but I think that far fewer things happen than they expected.
Thank you for clarifying the information. And just one more question of the city manager. Is there any cost at all to the, to the city of Lowell in this program? of Lowell in this program?
Jared, you can, you can address this. The, the primary responsibility for the bike, the management and all, is the company, it's VO Ride, not the city. We will post information so that members of the public, if they see a bike, they can call a number, or they can email, so that the general public is going to be aware if there's a bike that hasn't been picked up, they can, they can report that.
So our part is just informational more than?
Yeah, and, and core, and, and working together, but we are not paying for.
Absolutely, so the bikes are fully provided by VO Ride. The FAQ that is distributed in your packets as well really directs anyone with questions to VO Ride, provides their website, the app, the, their email address, their customer service hotline. All that information has now been shared with Public Works, with the Police Department, with Recreation, with various city departments that we would expect might just get questions from people who see a bike show up, but as a way to say, you know, here's some basic information, but really VO Ride is, is responsible for picking up bikes that might be left in the wrong place, fixing bikes as, as they're broken, and moving bikes that around to different parts of the city.
And we are asking VO Ride, Councilor, to go to the neighborhood groups and make presentations to each of the neighborhood groups as well.
Good, thank you.
Councilor Mercia?
I thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to these gentlemen. Are you supposed to be wearing a helmet when you ride this bike? Or you're not?
So we address the, we ask that each user in, upon agreeing to the user agreement, which is the first step to using our, accessing our system, follow the local ordinances. We provide messaging on the bike, but we do not, in our system, require a user wear a helmet.
So if I wanted to rent one of those bikes, I wouldn't need a helmet?
No, you wouldn't.
Because you don't supply it.
So one of the efforts on VO Ride's part is to provide helmets to users who are eager to have one. What we are hoping to do is have some helmets available for those who are interested at the April 2nd launch event.
Right, thank you.
Madam Manager?
Just the, the Law Department did inform me that under state law, 16 or under must wear a helmet. Adults, it's to their discretion, but under, under state law and of course, our law, that 16 or under must wear, wear a helmet.
Thank you.
All set? Council, Elliot?
Just briefly, most of my questions were answered, but I thought it would be helpful if you just briefly described the cost, because it's really not expensive when you look at it, it's 50 cents for every 15 minutes. You can get a day pass, you can get a monthly pass, you can get a yearly pass. I, I think that would be, you know, I think that's important and to get out there, because sometimes you think, well, you know, is, is, how expensive is it, right?
Well, you said it pretty clearly yourself. The pay-as-you-ride option is the most popular, 50 cents for 15 minutes, and it simply tallies in 15-minute increments. We do provide options for pass purchases for frequent users. We do provide also a university student discounted rate, actually anyone with an EDU email when they sign up, and so we, we want to make the system very accessible.
Council Kennedy, then Council Cirillo?
Yeah, so that comes out to about $2 an hour for the bike, but also, one of the best values, I think, is you, you've got, you can use it at, for 24, 24 hours of time for a $6.99, seven bucks, which would end up being a two, two-hour bike ride. So you can use it 12 times, right, for seven bucks for up to two hours each time.
Correct. If you purchase the $6.99 pass, you have that window of 24 hours to use as many two-hour rides as you would like. However, it is, it is not accurate to say that you can use the same bike, you simply have access to the system.
You don't get, right, I didn't think that you got to keep the bike for that amount of time, but you, you get that many rides?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor?
Yes, I was wondering if it was possible to get the, the VO Ride information out to the businesses in and around Lowell, so that if they, if people do see a bike out, they'll, they'll maybe see this, this VO Ride information in, in one of the businesses' windows and, and know who to call and, and possibly even ride the bike, even pay and ride. So I was thinking that if we could get the VO Ride, maybe like sheets out to the businesses, that would be really wonderful.
Is that possible to get flyers? We'll put it on our social media, of course, and, and put it out to the public, but is, I don't know, the VO Ride has flyers that can be put in businesses' windows if they wanted it downtown or other places throughout the city?
Absolutely. We provide flyers to the market, specifically catered, of course, for that market's bike design and pricing, and we would be more than happy to share that with who, whomever is interested, yes.
That's, that's wonderful, thank you.
Council Elliot?
Maybe the Lowell Sun might be doing a story on it, and if you take an ad out, you'd get more coverage. But I just wanted to, could you bring that bike in so people can see what it looks like? I know it's behind there, but I think it would be helpful for people to see it, so they, they see it on the street, it's just not going to be.
There'll be a lot of teal bikes on the street, they're all the same color.
Could we have Council Conway riding around?
Council Kennedy's up, maybe he can just demonstrate for us. Council Cirillo?
Well, April 2nd, I expect all councils to show up to meet this bike.
Let's walk the walk here, or ride the ride.
Yeah, that is something that VO Ride will be bringing to the April 2nd ribbon cutting, is a number of bikes, so that you can go on a short ride around JFK Plaza and back to the front steps.
Will Trinity Ambulance be also be there?
And that's going to be at 5:30, right out front of City Hall. The public is invited to come down and see the new Bike Share program that will be launched on April 2nd.
And of course, we will have our in-house media team make sure that that is, that everyone is informed of the event, yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you. Thank you. Next?
Best of luck. You want that back?
Yeah.
I see it has a light on the basket.
Go ahead. Council Cirillo, you can ride it.
I am, all right.
I think when Council Conway was talking about the training program, he wasn't talking about the children, I think he was talking about us, but that's all right. All right, thank you. And next is motion response, Community Preservation Act, Council Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it might be a good idea to, and I think originally, we were going to send this to the Housing Subcommittee, and I think it might be a good idea to do that, and the only thing I would ask that that Housing Subcommittee take a look at what the financial impact is going to be, and how the, the potential exemptions to the act would impact that financial, financial impact. So, so if I can put a motion on, and I would move that it be referred to the Housing Subcommittee.
There's a vote down. We have a vote for this.
There's a vote on the agenda that I, that I have marked off, that we can refer, instead of voted on, we can refer to.
Most of the suspended, take it up now.
Whatever you like.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think originally, when I brought this motion up, it was to really, and we get a report, motion respond, I believe last week, in that I was requested that this report got sent to the Housing Subcommittee. In addition, I was also asking that Madam City Managers have the DPD prepare a presentation that, you know, speak to the potential benefit that this will have for the city. So I want to bring that up again, and that's important, so that we, the Housing Subcommittee looked at it, and then with, with a report, a presentation from the DPD as to the potential benefit that it has. So, and that's, that I think, I, I, when I saw this, I was like, wow, this is quick, but no, that's not what it is, so we want to have that, you know, address.
You know, there was a request to prepare the vote, but to refer it to a Subcommittee, and so that, that, we have the form of the vote, but of course, the council has to decide a number of factors, including if it were to approve it, the percentage of tax, there's a lot of moving parts to this, so, so we pursued to the motion, we were sending it, put it forward so that the Subcommittee, we will have Planning and Development make a presentation, as well as Finance, in terms of what 1%, 2%, or 3% would, would amount to, or what the impact could be, because that's what's prescribed under the statute.
Council Milhanazo, then Council Mercia?
Thank you, I will support Council Kennedy's motion to refer the vote to the Housing Subcommittee, but I just want to point out that the city solicitor has recommended that it also be referred to the Finance Subcommittee, so at some point, out of the Housing Committee, it might actually go to the Finance Subcommittee, I don't know if the solicitor wants to be heard on that, but.
It, it wasn't a specific, it is a specific recommendation in there, however, it's there because I thought that's actually where the council had wanted it.
Oh, okay.
If I was incorrect, just disregard mine.
Then the Housing Subcommittee's.
Regardless, we will provide financial information to whatever Subcommittee it goes.
Thank you.
Is it re, Mr. Mayor, is this requiring a public hearing as well?
No.
No, no public hearing?
I don't believe so.
No, it wouldn't, and certainly, but the Subcommittee will be advertised as far as what, what they're considering.
Council Kennedy?
Thank you. First of all, I think it should go to the Housing Subcommittee, but this was, this was the initiative of Council Noon, not, it wasn't, not my initiative, Mr. Man, so I just would want to point that out, he's the one that, Council Noon is the one that, that brought this up. And just to Council Mercy, it requires a vote of the Council, but it also requires that it be on the ballot for a referendum, right, as well, both things.
Council Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I thought we did send it to the Housing Subcommittee, but now the, the official vote is sent. Either way, it doesn't matter if it goes to Finance or not, I certainly am going to attend, but I do think the financial presentation is, is significant, because it is a surtax on top of the existing levy, and I, I think residents need to know what that impact is, especially in light of the fact of the increases that are forthcoming with many of our projects. So I think that, I think we have to get as much information out there, even before it comes to the Council for a vote. And I agree with Council Mercy, is it possible to, you know, before this comes, I know it's advertised, and it's a council, it'll be on the council agenda, and it'll be posted, but is, is it possible to have a public hearing? Once we do get the reports from the Subcommittee, and they weigh in, and the financial implications, as well as the, what proposed uses other communities, as well as this community has, and the offsets, and et cetera, I, I just think it's a big step before the Council moves forward to even, and, and as was mentioned, it's going to go on the ballot, but, so, it's just my two cents.
Solicitor may be able to address the public hearing component?
Sure, the, as, as you noted, it's, it's going to go on the ballot, but that, we certainly can have a public hearing, and, and often do, however, the process in this is just slightly, slightly different, but nothing would prohibit us from having a, a public hearing on it.
Maybe, I don't know, I know it'll be advertised, so public hearing just seems to be a little bit more inviting, and I know there is a, an advertisement component to that, so, anyway, that's down the line after the Subcommittee meetings, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so basically, we have the motion changed from Finance to Housing, so I need a motion to refer this to Housing? And? So basically, the reading, excepting the provisions of Section 3 through 7 of Chapter 44B of Massachusetts General Law Reg. and the Community Preservation Act. So I just need a motion to refer this to Housing, by Council Cirillo, and second by Council Kennedy. Do we need a roll call?
No.
All set? All right. Next is information report, UML Lowell Civic Stadium Commission appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the three representatives on the Stadium Commission from the, from UMass Lowell had all either retired or were no longer with the university, so the Chancellor has appointed three new members, Patricia McCafferty, Adam Backy, and Peter Casey, to take their three spots on the commission.
Any questions? Thank you. All right, I need a motion to accept and place and file?
So moved.
Council Kennedy, second by Council Elliot. Thank you. Next, we have communications, City Manager requests out-of-state travel, the Health and Human Services, and wastewater. Need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
By Council Kennedy, second by Council Mercy, roll call. Council Milhanazo?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercy?
Yes.
Nine yeses. Next, we have a vote to appoint retired police officers as special police officers with paid detail. Waive the full reading, the second reading by title. Authorizing the filing of special legislation regarding the appointment of retired City of Lowell Police Department official, officers as special police officers with the City of Lowell paid detail assignments. Any further discussion, Council? I need a motion to accept by Council Conway, second by Council Milhanazo. Roll call. Council Milhanazo?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercy?
Yes.
Next, vote to approve the exemption of Crystal Lomé from provisions of Mass General Law 268A. Waive the full reading, the second reading by title. Approve the exemption of Crystal Lomé from the provisions of Mass General Law's 268A, Section 20. I need a motion to adopt?
Move or approve?
By Council Milhanazo, second by Council Noon, roll call. Council Milhanazo?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercy?
Yes.
Next, vote to authorize the City Manager to execute a license agreement with Lee Properties LLC, Overhanging Arning. Waive the full reading, the second reading by title. Authorize the City Manager to enter into license agreement, Lee Properties LLC, to encroach upon the City of Lowell property at 485 Bridge Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. Need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
By Council Elliot, and second by Council Noon, roll call. Council Milhanazo?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercy?
Yes.
Nine yeses. Next, orders from the City Manager, order 60-day trial, waive full reading, the second reading by title. Pursuant to Chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, concerning Section 266-6, thereof entitled temporary experimental regulations, temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period of up to 60 days. Need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
By Council Conway, second by Council Kennedy?
Mr. Mayor, comment? If I could? I'm, I'm actually concerned about Section 266-47, the stop sign intersections all along Andover Street. Again, I, I think I understand the logic, but I just think it almost, almost rises to the level of sign pollution along Andover Street. That's just my opinion. Again, some, some streets do have a stop sign, for instance, Trelle has a stop sign at Andover Street, but all of these streets don't. And I just don't know if there's a state requirement, because it's a state road, so again, I don't think I could support it based on that being in there.
Madam Manager?
Thank you, I know Natasha Vance is here, I had a similar reaction, Counselor, about putting in all the stop signs, and, but after speaking to the traffic engineer, she could give an explanation to the Council to, as far as what, what her experience has been in, on this issue, dealing with the public.
Yeah, so it does, I know it's sort of a little shocking to see this big, long list. There are a lot of cross streets on Andover in Lowell, and almost all of them have stop signs, not including these, about half are on one side, half are on the other side, and they are not lined up. When I was at the Belvedere Neighborhood Meeting, a number of residents who often walk on Andover Street reported people not stopping and just rolling through, and feeling very unsafe, and requested stop signs. I also got a couple calls about that. I, I agree with your comment about sign pollution, I, we have a lot of signs in the city, and I would prefer to have fewer rather than more. In this instance, I am a little concerned about pedestrian safety, because it is, when I drive on Andover Street, I always see people walking. I think it's becoming more of a cut-through on, on some of those roads as well, and so that's the thought process. It is a 60-day trial, and if it turns out to not be effective, they can always be taken down. There's also a possibility of when the weather gets a little better, we could paint stop bars and stop on the pavement. So there are other options. I was more thinking that at night, if people aren't familiar with the road, the stop sign is reflective and high visibility, so they'd be more likely to stop. So it's sort of a, like a pedestrian safety plan. I do, I have noticed in Lowell, people don't necessarily seem to know that when you get to a road that's a T, you're supposed to stop. We've talked about that a couple other times on Merrill Drive and other places in the city. So that's also part of the thought process is that people would then know they have to stop at that location.
Counsel Milhanazal, please.
I guess, you know, hearing the phrase pedestrian safety, you know, kind of changes my opinion, but at the end of the day, I'd like a report after the sixty days to see if in fact it has provided any additional pedestrian safety.
Sure. That would, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Counsel Conway?
Yeah, just very quickly, the, you know, and I agree with Counsel Milhanazal on that. And I do walk Andover Street quite a bit. And with, and I agree that the cars go right through. However, even with the stop sign, they go right through also. So I'd be interested in taking a look at the, the report and see how that, see how it works out. Thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call. Counsel Milhanazal?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Counsel Brissette?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we leave the manager's portion of the agenda, I had a couple of announcements that I did want to make. One has to do with the census that was sent out by the city. I think there was some confusion. The, the city contracted with a printer who's, was to send out the census as we do, is the typical form. The city delivered, we mailed out some forty-one thousand mailers. The city delivered the information to the printer in late January with the anticipation they would be sent out at least by the end of February, if not sooner. The sent, the printer had difficulty. We, we print about the census in three languages, and it was the Camar language that they were finding difficulty getting a sign off on the translation, and so they were delayed. What we weren't aware of, or I wasn't aware of, that the printer had pre-printed the envelopes and was waiting on the translation. And on the envelope, there was a notice to return by March seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. Now, that is not a deadline. I want to repeat, that is not a deadline. The city will accept returns of the census form up to the second week and process them up to the second week of June. Under the law, people are supposed to return the census form within ten days of receiving it. Apparently, a few years ago, the city started putting a date on the envelope as a, an assistance to, to the public, apparently, so that, you know, just saying ten days, there were some who thought that wasn't definitive enough, and so put the date on. Well, that's okay, as long as it's a date that it didn't come and go before you get the form, or isn't the very next day. So I think there was some confusion. We apologize for that. We did put out on social media, clearing up. We weren't aware that that date had been put on the envelopes, and the printer did get the printing out. But the March seventeenth date, we are telling the public, you may disregard that. It does have to be in by June. The Elections Department did receive about twenty-five phone calls. They've called back, and we are putting the word out. So I just want people to know, if they've received their census form, they see that March seventeenth date to disregard, please fill it out and return it to us. And if they have any questions at all, to call the Election Department or my office.
All right. Thank, Ms. Lee, Counsel...
Thank you for that. And the other thing I noticed, everybody's bringing the excise tax in too. When does that have to be in by?
The twenty-first.
Yeah, so, because that's always a bone of contention, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I have another report that I did want to bring the Council up to speed on. As we have talked about before briefly, the issue concerning heat at the high school and heat in our public school buildings has been an issue that we have been dealing with all season. We've reported and given you the list of information that we provided to the Board of Health. Largely, the same complaint was lodged by, my understanding, the UTL with the Labor Department. And the Labor Department did come and visit the city, visited two schools, and then it's met with staff, and then issued a written warning and asked for a response within thirty days. We did file a response by the city, which detailed best we could, all the steps that we have been taking and are taking and also will take in and around the heating system in the heat, in the, in the, in the high school as well as the other schools. But, and there were a couple of points corrective actions. We did request, in addition to filing a preliminary response to the Department of Labor, we did request an extension, which you're entitled under the, their procedure, so that we could sit with them and have a discussion over exactly what they were looking for in some of the areas. We had that meeting last week. It was a very productive meeting, and as a result, they've sent us some information that we requested, and they indicated what they're looking for from us. So that's where that situation stands. I'm happy to provide Council with copies of any correspondence. These are public records, so there's no, there's no secret agenda. But one thing we did point out in the, in the letter, which is, I think, extremely important, is we have heat in all of our schools. There has been, as we put in our preliminary response, time to time where a system has gone down, and our DPW has responded and gotten that particular system up and going. There was one issue that we discovered, I think it was in December, that prior years or at some point, some time ago, the school department did have a notification system, and, and what it would do is notify the school department if there was, if a boiler went down overnight. They'd get a call or an alarm that would go to someone who would notify DPW if that happened. That system, for whatever reason, wasn't operational. It had to be upgraded. There had to be a lot of software updates, and that is operational and has been operational since December and has worked very well. So that was one of the issues that we, we talked about. And then the other area, you know, had to do with going forward and what is our plan in terms of heating in these schools and so forth. And of course, this Council has supported a robust application to the MSBA for boiler replacements in a number of our schools, and have, we've laid out a ten-year plan for doing that. I think the other thing that is important to note, which we've discussed and which we put forward, is that despite the fact, we have old systems that could go down. They could be working today and then have a problem tomorrow, but we are responding rapidly in, in addressing the heat. But the, the superintendent has a plan for each and every school, that if, if a school did not have heat, or certain classrooms didn't have heat, she has a plan for relocating the students if that is necessary. So that exists for every single school. And so there, in no instances are there children sitting in a cold school all day long or day after day. That has not happened. I'm not saying it never happened. I don't know, but it has not happened. With regard to the high school, as this Council knows, the Council supported a very expensive but necessary plan last spring, when the, there was gas leaks at the fieldhouse, and we had to replace systems with brand-new systems in terms of the heat at the gymnasium or the fieldhouse. We spent probably somewhere in the vicinity of seven-hundred-thousand dollars between the two issues that we've dealt with there. And, and so we are totally supporting making certain that the school, you know, we know there's going to be a new school. It's down the road several years, so we need to make sure that we have adequate facilities to provide heat. And so we have honestly, since, since last April, been working nonstop. And with regard to the high school, let me just address, I think there's social media will tell you there's some cold classrooms. Again, you know, if, based on all the work we've done there, in both in Freshman Academy, in the twenty-two building, in the eighty building, there's certainly been some classrooms that were too hot, and we've had those complaints. And, and so the DPW has been over there trying to balance that. We've brought in consultants, two different teams of consultants, to look at what's the best solution for, for that. And we are getting the reports on that with, from, from our consultants. In terms of the high school, we spent an incredible amount of time and attention to address those issues. There remains a couple of areas that don't have heat because we have nineteen heating units on the nineteen-eighty building. One of them, they've repaired and or replaced all, but one, one has to be replaced. It has to be designed and put out to bid. That is accounting for heat in the, in the TV studio and a couple of other spaces, no classrooms. And so the, the children are not affected by, by that in terms of classroom and learning space. And we are looking at, though the steam plant has been repaired and is functioning and has been functioning, we are looking at a more long-term one, and our consultants are coming up with something that we will have to put out to bid, and we're working on the scope of that service. So, you know, with regard to the Green Hill School, which had problems two days in December of no heat, that system has been repaired and is working. It is also on our list for a new boiler in terms of the Green Hill with the MSBA. So in no way has the city been ignoring the needs of the schools. I would say to the contrary, the city has been there constantly. Maybe some would say to the, to the neglect of a building like City Hall or, or others. But, and we have worked very closely with the superintendent and with her team, if not a daily basis. Certainly, our, our people who talk to hers every single day are in the schools virtually every day. We will, we can certainly provide the Council with a list of all the work that has been done in the, by the DPW and others, outside contractors in these schools. I think the, it is important to know that, you know, we have indicated to both the Board of Health and the DLS, we are more than happy to share all the information, and we have been doing so on a regular basis. We in no way question the issue of heat in the school. We have the same interest. We want the schools to have proper heat. We want the children to have the environment for learning, just like anybody else. So, but at no point has, have we, has the city ignored the needs, to the contrary. And, and as I said, some of the issues that were raised in the original letter from DLS, we, we asked for a meeting to clarify some of those, and which were clarified. And so we're moving forward. We'll be providing that, and we're working together on, on providing them the necessary information. I just wanted the Council to be aware of that.
Counsel Lee?
Thank you. So you bring up a good point, too. When we redo the high school?
Yep.
Are the, are the systems more efficient now? We're going to use less rooftop?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Yeah, the systems are...
Less roof, stuff on the roofs and...
Well, there may be mechanicals on the roof, but the systems will be extremely efficient. They're both heating and air conditioning systems that are going in to the, to the entire school, whether it's the...
What did you say?
I said both heating and air conditioning.
All right. John McDonough, it would be good to hear that, air conditioner.
He does ask that.
Yeah.
And so, but they are very efficient. And, and we chose, when the school building committee was going over the options for the mechanicals, chose the, what we felt was the most efficient and affordable. And, and, but we weren't sacrificing efficiency for affordability. So it was, it was a balancing act. But based on what the, the consultants told us, remarkably efficient. And especially, everything will be brand-new. New windows, new walls, new mechanicals. You know, it's a brand-new building essentially, each and every one of the buildings. So.
Thank you.
Much, I, I think we did have a very productive meeting at the MSBA yesterday to go over the numbers that were submitted last month that the Council had seen and we submitted and reconcile with the MSBA. We are in pretty, pretty close agreement for a project of this size. Actually, they came out with numbers that are a little more favorable to the city than what we even had ourselves as far as our district share. But one thing we did talk about was the savings that the city will actually realize with all these new systems, based on what we're spending, you know, today for heat in, in a variety of old systems.
Counsel Brissette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Manager Donahue. Now, we're in the middle of repairing the nineteen-twenty-two building roof.
We're replacing it.
And what happens down the road when it becomes remodeled and new heating system gets put in and they have to put things on the roof? Are we gonna...
So the, it, the, a new roof is in the budget that was approved, the three hundred, you know, that was sent down. So a new roof is there. So if we get to that point and it's going to be significant change in terms of design and mechanicals, there will be a new roof, period. And now, the one that we have, the, the work that's being done is twofold. One is all the masonry around the building, which has to be done. That's actually the cause of many of the leaks over there because the masonry is so broken down. And so that's being done, and that will stay. That's more than almost half the cost of what's happening there. The roof material itself, you know, once the masonry's done, then the roof will go on. The masonry work that started last month is going to take until August. It's an extensive job. But then, to your point, the roof, you know, that you, we think of as a roof, the, the flat area on the nineteen-twenty-two building...
Is that a rubber roof?
It's not rubber. It's, there's, it's a black roof, I know that. And there's different grades. But the, the long and short of the answer is if, if the roof is fine and there's no disturbance, then that part of the budget will come out. But if it has to be replaced, we'll have to replace it, but it's already in the budget. So we don't know. But we, what we do know is it was never going to last between now, in, in the nineteen-twenty-two building, at least right now, is slated to be the last building done. So more like twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, and we needed to replace that roof.
Is that, for the discussion? All right, thank you. Next, we have...
I just had one more. This is in everybody's packet, I hope, but next Monday night, the, at the Senior Center at six PM to eight PM, there'll be a community presentation of the high school project. So we are sending out notice to the, the schools, to the parent groups, to the public. Everybody is invited. It, it will be presented by our consultants, Skanska, as well as Perkins Eastman. They will have presentation slides as well as updated work that will, the public can see, including in this, we will make sure the Council gets some of the interior designs of some of, you know, much of what we saw were the exterior elevations. But they have worked on giving some samples of what the inside of the high school will look like. So, and will be available, as will the city, to answer anybody's questions. So it's Monday, March twenty-fifth, six to eight PM at the Lowell Senior Center. We will have interpreters who will be present to interpret for those who English is not their first language.
Ms. Lee?
And it will be recorded by LTC. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to make sure.
No, I was just going to ask, could the manager's office or the mayor's office just send us out a reminder Friday or Monday afternoon for that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Okay, thank you. Next, report of Subcommittee Park and Recreation, Subcommittee, March nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Counsel Brissette?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet at five-thirty here at the Council Chamber to discuss the Counsel, Counsel Elliot's motion to discuss the renaming of the park on Branch Street from Clemente Park to Palin Park. I did receive a lot of calls on that from people of Puerto Rican descent that were concerned. And I know that they don't utilize it now, but they were concerned, and I was bringing their message forward as well. Not that I don't think this is a good idea, but just when, how do we name something and change it? I know that many years ago, it was changed from Washington Park, and I remember the history of that. And I guess people didn't come here to discuss that, but there were quite a few Southeast Asians that were here, many speakers that spoke to say that they would prefer that that be changed. But let me take you back to two thousand and seventeen, when Counsel Elliot made a motion in response to the Puerto Rican people that wanted some sort of a youth park for their sports. wanted some sort of a youth park for their sports, and we had Tom Belga at the time come forward and try to give us an understanding as to what we could do, and he suggested that because Keith Rudy was not with the PYO in this particular field, that they made that Roberto Clemente Field. And at that time, it passed. We brought it to the Board of Parks, they supported it, everything was fine. But at that time, we learned that if you have, which is Kumuns Ellis Park, you could make a field, and that field was Roberto Clemente Field. You could do the same thing at Roberto Clemente Park, you could make it Palin Field. But I guess the people of Southeast Asian descent, they did not want that to happen. They wanted, and I know that they own the area around there, they take good care of it, they make it seem like it's theirs, they do everything they can to make that serviceable, and it is Palin community in that area there, which they utilize it all the time with their volleyball and their bocce and things like that. Having said that, we didn't know which way to go, but I did have a recommendation from the law department that there is no policy in place, and that we could refer this motion to the city manager, as well as the law department, and have them draw up a policy as to what we can do with naming or renaming a park and things like that. And at that same time, we would be looking to different other issues, such as what I brought up, the Doughboy Monument, and we were going to ask if we could move it across the street, so that they could make way for a nine-one-one monument there. And it didn't. People were outraged to think that we were moving that monument. It's been there a hundred years, and they didn't want to touch it. I had that similar thought with Roberto Clemente Park. After all, he was a great leader, a great baseball player. There's much history there. This is a thirty-eight-year-old man that was a hero in baseball, who died bringing supplies and food to the people that were victims of an earthquake in Nicaragua. So, I didn't feel compelled to have done that. I wanted some guidance, and I did speak to the law department as to where can we go with this. When you recall, there is no policy in place, and that's simply my motion, but it went nowhere. So, and I know the people that were here in this hall were very upset about that, that we didn't come forward and endorse it a hundred percent. And I have no animosity towards Southeast Asians, but I do have concern that, I don't want to offend anybody. I don't want to offend people of that heritage, of Puerto Rican heritage, to say we're going to take that name away. Just where do we draw the line? I thought through a policy that would make it a lot more understanding. As I refer you back to the time when, we'd get calls all the time as to, could you name this corner for my veteran uncle who was in the war, or my grandfather, or this or that. And then a policy was made where they established a committee, and a committee looked at the criteria as to, was he a Medal of Honor recipient? Was he, did he, was he a prisoner of war? And then it kind of said, instead of running out of corners, you have the greatest, most deserving people to have a veterans' corner named after your relative. As it is, we've got numerous calls from people that want to name, put a bench at a park, or put a bench on a corner, and they want it named after someone. Where does it draw the line? And what type of policy do we have in place that can, we can look at and say, well, here's the policy, this is what we're going to do? I simply had that in mind, and that's what I wanted to do. So, it was not referred to the law department. There will not be a policy in place, but Councilor Leahy made the motion that we take this issue and this renaming, and we refer it to the Board of Parks, and that's where we stand right now. I know that the people of Puerto Rican descent are very, very happy with their field, and we said to the Southeast Asians, you can have a field called Palin Field, but they didn't want that. So, we'll see, and I'm not trying to pass the buck, but I thought we should have had a policy in place. It didn't stand, and that if they want to add any more to this, they're welcome to do it. But that's the report of progress. Thank you.
Councilor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't support the policy because we don't have jurisdiction over this. There's no policy to put in place because this responsibility lies squarely with the Board of Parks. If the Board of Parks wants to develop a policy, I understand. But let me take you back as well. This is, we have been working on this with the Latino community, with the Cambodian community. I can go back to at least five years when I was the mayor, because they came and they asked for a meeting back then. And part of the process was, we made it clear, and the organizers at Clemente Park, they did not want to create any hard feelings with the Latino community. So, we did work. We went to, you know, we identified a location. What the Latino community want, in particular of Roberto Clemente Park League, is they wanted a place to call home. They were getting permits, and the games were scattered throughout the city, and it's hard to get parents to identify and to get kids to the game. So, long story short, we did identify a field. And a couple of years later, the city improved it, and we dedicated that field, Roberto Clemente Field. The community couldn't be more happy. Go to the opening day every year, and it's their home field, it's the place where they congregate. So, they support the name change. It's the same situation with the Cambodian community. They've identified this particular park on Branch Street for the better part of twenty-five, thirty years. We had numerous speakers come up and say they, you know, the hundred percent essentially of the people that used the park is, are Cambodians. They live in the area, they came to the city, and this is where they congregate, this is where they identify. And as one of the speakers said, they're just asking the city to open up their heart to name one. There are ninety-four parks in the city. Not one of them is named for the community. So, we have been working with them, months and months and years, to understand the Latino community is happy, and now is the time to honor, I would say, and respect the population that is probably a third of the community. So, and they were very passionate about it. I think it's a fair thing to do. We now have two public locations in the city named after Roberto Clemente, and they have zero. So, it's, again, that's why I put the motion forward. We've been working on it. Council Noon and I put this motion on two years ago, and out of respect, we just wanted to ensure that we weren't going to offend anybody, any community in the Latino community, as far as I know. I've not received any phone calls, any emails. I've spoken to individuals, representatives from the Puerto Rican Festival Committee and the Roberto Clemente League, and they fully support it. So, I'm glad that it is moving forward without any delay. Again, it is up to the Board of Parks. This was just a recommendation to have a discussion, and bring it through this governing body, and just to air on the subject. So, I think there was a lot of good points made at this subcommittee meeting, and this has been going on for quite some time. It's not a knee-jerk reaction. No one is trying to dishonor Roberto Clemente by any stretch. That's why we waited and designated a specific field to call home, where kids now go, they play, they learn, and they're excited about going to that field. So, that's why I brought the motion forward. That's why I'm pleased and I'm glad to see that the subcommittee is recommending to the Board of Parks that we adopt this, because it's, to me, it's the right thing to do, and we're all about inclusiveness in the city and reaching out to all of our cultural and ethnic caritages, and this does that, and I think it will send a strong message that they ask for one park. One speaker came up and said, we don't come down and ask for anything. They're taxpayers, they're voters, they're part of this community, and part of being a community is to have a central location where they congregate and they call home. Thank you.
Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was a very engaged meeting. The chairwoman, Mercier, have done a great job, you know, and I think everyone attend those subcommittee meetings acknowledge, you know, overwhelmingly that Mr. Roberto Clemente is a beloved person in the city and a hero, a very hero. So much for... And so, that said, we all know that in the eighties, thousands of Cambodian refugees, you know, came here, settled low, and the makeup of the park have changed. It's become a gathering place for the member of the Cambodian community. I mean, if you recall, two thousand and eleven, you know, the city, when I, it was last year, actually, I filed a motion to have light on the Roberto Clemente baseball field, because I know how it feel. With Roberto Clemente Park, we know it as Palin Park, there's no light for eight years. It's insane. So, I'm so happy that, through, with the help of the city manager and the DPD directors, that we're going to have something happen soon, very soon. And I'm telling you, the Roberto Clemente baseball committee is going to be very excited about having light there, because I know how it feel when the light first turned on in two thousand and eleven, when I was, I became the counselor then. So, that's when the light turned on, and the city invest so much money into concession stands and bocce park, bocce ball, and, you know, for Cambodian, we unfortunately don't play volleyball, a lot of us. We play, oh, no, we don't play baseball. We play volleyball, basketball, the kid, and bocce park, we adopted from the Italian, of course. So, but then, two thousand and twelve, I mean, the city have recognized that area as Cambodian town, and the university and the community put together, creating a healing garden where we dedicate to those who die and those who fled to America, like myself fled here. So, places, so it is a park. This park is a social and cultural centerpiece for the Cambodian community, and I'm happy that, you know, that Councilor Mercier, Chairwoman Mercier, and the committee recommended it to the Board of Park and to have the name changed. So, I'm very happy. Tonight's subcommittee meeting really make a lot of Cambodian, very happy, Cambodian American, very happy, because those are the park, aside from Shade Park, the most utilized park in the city of low. Don't believe me, just don't take my word. Just go one summer, you will count at least fifty to eighty people, young and old, flock that park, playing, enjoying. That's their place to hang out. So, I thank you, Chairwoman Mercier and the subcommittee for recommending this to the Board of Park. Thank you.
Councilor Millenazo?
Thank you. Before I comment, I just, I'm looking for a point of clarification. Did the subcommittee actually recommend the name change? I didn't think they did. They did? Oh, okay, that's terrific. That's terrific. I was sitting in the cloakroom, and I thought they just referred the issue to the Board of Parks, not the name change. So, I mean, again, if they, and again, I don't believe the chairman actually said we're recommending that it be named Palin Park. I thought Councilor Mercier said, with all due respect, that you were sending it to the Board of Parks, because it's within their jurisdiction. But if the subcommittee recommended it to be changed, I just want to say that I would support that. I think it's a...
Yes, Councilor Mercier, you respond. You want?
Well, we referred the issue.
The issue, so the name wasn't...
Which the issue says to rename the park, so the issue is the same as renaming it. It's the same thing.
But was there a vote by the subcommittee saying name Clemente, change the name Clemente Park to the Palin Park? Because I didn't hear that when I was in the cloakroom.
I had to leave to prepare for the meeting. It's the clerk.
Again, I'm just looking for, let me just finish by saying that I think that this council and the park subcommittee and Councilor Elliott, you know, has handled this well, in my opinion. They were able to work with the Latino community and have the Clemente Field named over at Kumuns Ellis Park. And to Councilor Noon's point, not only did most of the Southeast Asians don't play baseball, Roberto Clemente wasn't a volleyball player or a bocce player. So, I think the fact that now we have Clemente Field, and now this going to the Board of Parks to be named Palin Park, I think is a step in the right direction, because the Southeast Asian community, in my opinion, they've adopted not only this park, but this entire neighborhood. And I think that from a standpoint of their cultural heritage and statement, this really needs to be done. And again, if the subcommittee recommended it, my hat's off to them. I just didn't hear that when I was sitting on the cloakroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Conway?
Yes, thank you. Councilor Millenazo is a hundred percent correct. It was referred to the Board of Parks. I made a motion to recommend that the city council take a vote to rename the Clemente Park to the Palin Park, and bring that to the Board of Parks. However, I did not get a second on that. So, you are correct.
Okay. Councilor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, my understanding, if I'm hearing everything correctly, is that this matter is being referred to the Board of Parks, and the Board of Parks is going to make a recommendation, I guess. The only thing that I would suggest is that the Board of Parks, or maybe the law department, or somebody, come up with a policy on the naming of parks and other items in the city. And just as importantly, that they also come up with a policy for renaming parks and other items in the city that are named, because if this was Washington Park, we wouldn't even be talking about this. It would just be, change the Palin. It's the fact that this has been changed in recent years to Roberto Clemente that now it's an issue. And I think it's the same thing with the statue over in, near the North Common. It's, that's where it was placed. There's people in the Yerba that like for it to be there. There's maybe a lot of people in the city that don't realize why it's there, or why it matters whether it's there or someplace else. But it does matter to some people, and sometimes, because this council changes every two years, some of that gets lost in the history. But I do think that if we're not going to get into this type of controversy again, what we really need to do is have a policy in place that we stick to, that decides how we name things, but also, it should be very difficult to rename things later on, once they've been named, which would then make it be that the bodies that decide what something should be named would be very thoughtful and prudent about naming it in the first place.
I think you're right. In the future, we need to do the, but Councilor Mercier, I'd like to ask the clerk...
If he's making that motion, I'll second it, because that is truthful, what he just said.
Okay, so the motion is...
My motion is, it's being referred, is that we amend the motion to refer to the Board of Parks and have the property department, maybe the law department come up, or the city manager come up with a policy for the naming of parks and monuments and other items, streets.
Absolutely.
And also a policy on how we would go about renaming something.
That's it, and I second it, and that's exactly what the point of the whole discussion was all about.
I'd like to ask the clerk, see what he can...
As Councilor Conway indicated, that the motion was to refer to the Board of Parks for action. That amendment, the amendment Councilor Kennedy, I think, wants on, there's the same motion, but just adding that the Board of Parks and the law department develop a policy for the naming and renaming of, if I have it correctly.
So, you want to repeat it one more time to complete?
Counselor Kennedy's motion was to amend the recommendation from the subcommittee to refer the matter to the Board of Parks for the renaming of Palin Park. In addition, develop a policy to name parks and/or renaming of parks through the law department with the Board of Parks.
Yes, absolutely.
Councilor Elliott?
On the motion, I'm going to go back to watch the meeting, but I believe that the motion was, the motion that was referred to the subcommittee was for the subcommittee to discuss the renaming of the park to Palin Park. So, I believe there was a recommendation to the Board of Parks to change the name. It wasn't referring the issue. So, I will go back and look, but I just want to make clear that there was the recommendation. I believe Councilor Leahy made that motion, so. But regardless, the issue, I said, let's not, we won't get involved... not, we won't get involved in semantics. I don't disagree with, with a policy, but that policy has to be adopted by the Board of Parks. And, and it's not that we do this a lot, and it's not just this park. We have renamed, on occasion, other parks. I can say Alumni Field is now Martin Alumni Field over in the, the Martin Complex, Colley Stadium. And then I can tell you, in Pawtucketville, growing up, we knew a field as Flaggy's Field. It's now Campbell Field. So, we shouldn't be making a habit of it, but neighborhoods change, times change, people should be honored, and perhaps there should be criteria, but it's not, as if it's not been done in the past.
No, I think everybody's made a, everyone's had good points on all, on all sides. The issue of name of something, Pailin Park, I mean, it's something the Cambodian community has been waiting for. But the issue of needing a policy, some decision made as to a policy approach. If recall, last year, there was an issue at Shed Park about renaming, taking the Girls' Park away and putting it somewhere else and what have you. And that caused a lot of stir in the community. And that's a present day community. And so, the thing is, I think with councillor Kennedy's amendment to the motion, that, you know, from this point, we really should have a policy. So, the thing is, we're not put into a situation like this where...
That's right.
You know, decisions are made and they seem to be arbitrary or capricious, when they're really not. But the thing is, it's, when you make changes, you're going to offend somebody. There's no question about that. But we want to meet the needs of the Latino community, we want to meet the needs of the Cambodian community, and just as important, we want to meet the needs of all future community, communities and/or groups that work hard to, in the naming of something. But we also want to respect the past as well as the future, so.
Just for, for a point of clarity, there was a motion, couldn't be, it can't be an amendment because it's a separate meeting. So, there's a motion on the floor by councillor Kennedy, seconded by councillor Mercia, to, to refer, to, to, in a, to supplement the city, the Subcommittee's motion referring the Pailin Park discussion to them, in, in addition to develop a policy with, by the Board of Parks and our Law Department for the naming and renaming of parks.
Councillor...
It can just be a separate motion.
So, is that a separate motion then? What you're saying is it should not be an amendment.
The motion is just by councillor Kennedy, seconded by Mercia, to amend the, the mo, not to, in addition to the motion that was passed by the Subcommittee to have these Board of Parks and the Law Department develop a policy for the naming and renaming of...
I thought it was the manager and the Law Department for the policy.
It is the manager and the Law Department.
Manager and the Law Department.
That incorporates both. Councillor Millenazzo.
Just a question, does the renaming of the Clemente Park to Pailin Park, will that now wait for this policy to be, because I don't think it should. I mean, I think this has been a thoughtful process for the last couple of years.
This is a point of clarification. My intent is not, is without concern for that situation, but going forward, this can happen often.
Okay.
And it's happened in the past. And it's, we would be better off if we had some policy that we would, could live by and go by in order to give us direction going forward for the next time that happens.
We've got a direction at this particular point that's been debated well, but at this point, do we want to continue this type of a debate when there could be a policy that we could all accept? Councillor...
I'm just briefly, Mr. Mayor, so just from a logistical perspective, Mr. Clerk, there is a, the next Board of Parks meeting is next Wednesday. What is the process to communicate this to, to the Board of Parks? Because their agenda closes on Friday.
Yeah, I generate a letter, any referral, if it's a Subcommittee to refer, I generate a letter to the, to the, to the department and tell them that this has been referred to you.
So, they'll get it before, before their agenda closes?
When's, I don't, I don't handle their meetings. When's their next agenda, you told me?
Their next agenda, their next meeting is this, the following Wednesday, March 27th.
I'll send that letter tomorrow morning.
Okay, because the community is going to want to know where to go and what to go.
I can, I can have them, I can email it as well, so.
And, and secondly, they work in, they meet in the Planning and Development Boardroom. I, I suspect that there'll be lots of folks that will be attending, and I don't know if you just let them know there'd be a large, I think there'd be a large group of people that will come down, that will want to speak on this. I don't know if you can hear or not.
I'll have my secretary check with that and see if the mayor's reception room is open at that time.
All right, and that can be televised.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Councillor Millenazzo.
Yes.
Councillor Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Councillor Conway.
Yes.
Councillor Elliott.
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy.
Yes.
Councillor Leahy.
Yes.
Councillor Mercia.
Yes.
Nine years.
Thank you. Next, we have claims, property, two properties damaged. I need a motion to refer to the Law Department, a report and recommendation.
So moved.
So moved by councillor Kennedy and seconded by councillor Cirillo. And next, we have Ms. Laineus, Lisa and Dave DeLuca request installation of handicap parking sign at 131 B Street, the corner of Warwick Street. Motion to refer to transportation engineer for a report, recommendation by councillor Noon, seconded by councillor Mercia. For, next, we have city council motions. First motion by councillor Elliott. Request city manager evaluate option for increased oversight of human resources and finance functions between school and city departments.
Second.
Second. Councillor Kennedy. Councillor Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion is self-explanatory. This comes from a number of discussions we've had on this floor, as well as other finance Subcommittee. Just to evaluate exactly what the oversight is and how can we, you know, does it make sense to combine functions? Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, but clearly, from the various audit reports, we've seen that communication is, laps, there was a lapse, and that results in a number of findings that we, we saw in the audit. So, I'll wait for you to get the report. It's just to see if it does make sense, maybe parts of certain departments, whether it's human resource or finance. I know that there is some overlap on functions right now, but I don't know exactly what the logisticals issues are and either, is there opportunity to save some money and foster a better, more efficient operation with, with more oversight? So, that's the motion.
Thank you, councillor Leahy and councillor Conway.
Thank you.
So, through you to the manager. If, I don't know if this can be done with every form, but if it can, my suggestion would just be, we should, you should take a look at, you know, a, a good system, see what the numbers come out to. You know, we should have a, you know, fair pay for each direction down top, you know, director. I don't know if they'd need one or two assistants and then break it down into school division, city division, but, you know, basically, I think it's just going to come down to the, you know, are we getting our money's worth, right? And I think it just should be, there's always a discrepancy between school and municipality, so if it's a combined office, I think I would just like to see, you know, that it's fair pay and it's fair direction and, and clearly spelled out for who, who does what and who's responsible for school and municipality, so. And then we'll just see, you know, how it breaks down. Thank you.
We'll, we'll come back with a, a report.
Councillor Conway.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, I certainly understand the, the motion. If you take the second part of the motion, the finance functions between the school and the city departments, I think that in the last few weeks, we, we have seen that there's been some issues come up and it sounds like, or it seems as though the left hand doesn't know what the right hand really is doing. So, as far as that, if I, if, I think it might be a good idea, and again, it's just a suggestion that, so we don't run into that problem, perhaps the city manager and, and Connor Baldwin would sit down periodically, let's say, with the superintendent of schools and the business manager, and I think, you know, give updates, so again, the communication, but to also keep them separate, too. The, the other, the first part of that motion, I think, is, is a lot more complicated because there are certainly differences between the human resources that we have here and the human resources that take place in the school department. You know, in the school department, the human resources, you know, they have to, with, they're dealing with approximately twenty-five-hundred individuals. They have to oversee the hiring process for all the staff. They have to, they have to conduct any investigations on disciplinary matters for all the employees. I'm not going to go through the whole list, but this is just a few that I put down the other day to ensure that all employees have the proper certifications and, and on, on the different levels, and to ensure the teachers' licenses are up to date and PDPs are in place. They also monitor teacher and administrative evaluation process, and also any of the substitute teachers. They have to oversee that and get them. So, there's a lot more involved than the school department, I think, HR, different, different areas than what we deal with here on the, on the city side. So, I, I look forward to, to the report, Madam Manager.
All right, councillor Elliott.
Yeah, I, I think councillor Conway perhaps brings up some good points. I don't know. I don't, that's why I, I asked for an evaluation, to see if there, if there is opportunity to improve the way things are done. So, again, good points, maybe, you know, I, I just think it's FTE tracking, who's being hired, who is being laid off, and who's going on unemployment and who's not, because those are things that we found in audit findings where it's not being done as fluently as it should be and it's costing us money, where if there was a more streamlined approach, we'd be able to have that information and then, you know, and then put measures in place that will save money.
Next, we have, by councillor Elliott, require city manager have transportation engineer provide a report regarding possible lift and Uber drop off or pickup locations in downtown on nights and weekends. Need a second, councillor Noon? Councillor Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion comes from a neighborhood meeting where, believe it or not, the downtown in the evening has become sort of gridlocked as a result of individuals doing the right thing. They're calling, if they're coming out of the bars or somewhere else, a restaurant, then they're calling an Uber, a lift, and, and being picked up instead of getting behind the wheel. You know, the challenge is public safety, again, police officers get downtown and then can others get down to pick up. I, I do believe the chief is working on something. I believe Enterprise Bank has been gracious enough to do, maybe on a trial basis, to use that lot, and I, I think it makes some sense. Perhaps you're working on this, Madam Manager. I wasn't aware. I'm not sure, but I thought it was, I think it makes sense to look at it, to, to have a central, and a larger, you know, the city of Boston has it all over the place because it's become a, a major traffic nuisance throughout the city. So, that's the motion.
Next, by councillor Elliott, require city manager provide a report regarding zoning requirements and police activities at the Edge apartment complex. Need a second?
Second.
Noon? Councillor Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was supposed to be student housing, and to me, from the information that I receive and police reports, it is not, and it's, it's not just student housing, and it's unfortunate. And I, I understand the university did not support this for many of the reasons that are coming to light now. So, there's drug activity, it's, some of it's being used for student housing, but some of it is not, and it's, to me, it's becoming, we're getting more, the police are required to respond more than they should be at this place. So, I think it would be important to find out, you know, exactly, you know, what are, what are the options? How can we enforce this, this student housing? That's what it was zoned for. So, again, that's, that's the motion, and we shouldn't have to have police officers going there on a regular basis when it's student housing and how we address that. Perhaps that can be part of the report.
Councillor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I filed a motion last year around the issues of police respond to the Edge, because I learned that some of the tenant is not student. So, they ran it to a couple, or single guy or single ladies, but they're not university student. And the concern councillor Elliott addressed, brought up is correct. I mean, if you have some, you know, fishy things going on, drug activities and whatnot, it's right about the high school, the lower high school, and, and that ought to be really a really concern. So, I mean, we need to take a look at it, and if it's zoning for student housing, if non-student live there, we need to find them. And that's, that's it, period.
Thank you. Next, motion by councillor Elliott. City manager have DPD report on progress of Tana Street Economic Development Area realignment project. Second by councillor Cirillo.
Thank you. Maybe you're working on this. I know there was a previous motion, I think, on the status, maybe it was councillor Kennedy, on economic development projects. But I remember this being, being exciting and getting fund, funding to realign that project, and then we ran into some challenges with the VFW. But there is, there was, it was a terrific plan that is still in place, that can be implemented. So, I, and it'd be good to get an update on where we're at. I mean, there's, there was green space, there's lots of industrial space, and that's one corridor where we can develop economic development, and of course, with that comes additional taxes and jobs. So, I know we talked about it, but I'd like to just get a, a report because what I saw online, and I recall that it's, it's an exciting thing with, with SILRES and so many other things. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a good motion. Next Tuesday at five o'clock, the Economic Development Subcommittee will be meeting in the mayor's reception room for ninety minutes, from five until six-thirty. And at that time, there'll be a presentation on all of the economic development progress that's going on in the city, where we stand on Tana Street and, and everywhere else in the city. In addition to that, there'll also be a, a brief presentation on the City Lights program and where that's going and, you know, what's going to happen next with that. And included in that discussion will be the, the condition of the lower locks and, and what needs to be done over at the lower locks, over behind the, the, the conference center. So, all that happens next Tuesday in the mayor's reception room. It'll be on TV, and it should take ninety minutes, and we'll be moving right along. So, everybody is welcome to either tune in or, or be there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have, by councillor Noon, require city manager, or request city manager, have property department provide a traffic analysis of all neighborhood business districts aimed to better understand parking demands and also determine whether the city has or can invest in traffic comming measures, speed bumps, bump outs, pedestrian crossing, planting for these areas. Need a second? By councillor Elliott. Councillor Noon.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I tried to put everything on the motion so I don't have to speak, so it is.
Well said. You have it, Madam Manager? You're all set.
I knew there was a reason for that.
All right. Next, by councillor Noon. Yes, I'm sorry.
If I, if I could, I think councillor Noon did a great job of putting everything in this motion, but I also would just like to say that I, I think we should take a serious look at speed bumps. I really think that, I've seen speed bumps in other communities. I know other councils have brought up speed bumps from time to time, and I'm coming around to the fact that in certain areas, speed bumps probably make a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you. All set. All right, next, by councillor Noon, request city manager have the Economic Development Department report on the most recent outreach efforts to neighborhood business districts. If no recent effort requests implementing more outreach efforts. Second. Need a second, by councillor Cirillo.
Almost the same, except to say that DPD Economic Development people have done a great job. They did something a few months ago at the Middlesex and Brand Street. They actually organized a business, business committee, Cambodian Business Committee in that area, as they have done a couple of years ago at the Copper Square area, so I just want to comment that.
Councillor Cirillo.
I think this is a great motion because we have all these other vibrant areas in Pawtucketville, Centerville, South Lowell, Belvedere. So, we have all these wonderful vibrant areas, and I think this is an excellent motion. Thank you.
Okay, next, by councillor Noon. Request city manager have the property department organize by subjects and the dates, the documents and delete documents that are no longer relevant. Further, implement a more efficient search engine with proper keywords so that the documents are easy to find, and the review website, and review website regularly for needed updates. Do we have a speaker?
Second.
Second. I'm sorry, a second. Thank you, Council Cirillo. We have a speaker? Judith Durant?
Thank you for letting me address you once again. I'm, I'll make it quick. I was very, very frustrated with the city's website last week after attending a neighborhood meeting where Gunther Wellenstein came to talk about the new recycling rules, which first I was shocked that the rules changed in July, and I had no idea that they had changed. I don't exactly live with my head in the sand, so I was kind of surprised. And when he went through all of the things that had changed, I was further surprised and a little bit confused. So I did what I do, and I went to the, the website, where more and more of us get our information now, is, you know, you do a Google search, but I went to the city's website looking for information, and I just put in current recycling rules, and I got something like 246 hits, and none of it was current. There were flyers and information from 2015, 2016. There was an article from the Lowell Sun from 2009. I clicked on one flyer and it came up with a cute little girl drinking out of a juice carton. Cartons are recyclable, exclamation point, but they're not. We just learned that they're not recyclable, and that shouldn't be on there. I, I never did find what I was looking for. I was looking for the flyer that he handed out at that meeting so I could post it on the Democratic City Committee's website, you know, just post it around so people get the information, because a lot of people don't have it, and I couldn't find it anywhere. I did write it up. I was so frustrated, I sometimes just write a short story to get over it, and I sent it to Dick Howe, and he posted it on his blog, and it got a lot of, a lot of interest, including from Gunther, who then did what I asked and put that particular flyer right on the, the front page of the solid waste and recycling main page there. Anyway, there's just a lot of stuff that doesn't need to be there, and I, I think that that particular part of the site might, might be the worst, but there are other instances. I usually get invited to the St. Patrick's Dinner by a friend who's now retired and a snowbird, so he's not around anymore, and I thought, well, beginning of March, this must be coming up. So I did a search for that, and I landed on the cultural affairs page, and there it says, St. Patrick's Day Dinner, but there's absolutely no information about it. Just, it's going to happen, but you can't find out anything about it. There were a few things. Winterfest, again, is listed as one of the activities on the cultural affairs site, and there's just no information about it. And one other place that I found was, there's a street sweeping page that's, was put up in 2016 with the schedule for 2016, and nothing else after that. So, I don't know. I just, I think it's a good motion, and I, and I would like to see the page be more, the whole site be more accessible so we can get information there. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Council Noon?
Mr. Mayor, this motion actually came from Dick Howe's website, and I know Judith, Judith Durant wrote an op-ed, so to speak, and sent it to Dick Howe. However, instead of talking about one department, I think it's, it's the city as a whole, we need to look at our website and make it more, you know, efficient, you know, in certain, in terms of the search engine and stuff. So, you know, what's not relevant, take it out and, and put what relevant, what's important. I think, speaking of the, the issues of recycle and all that, and you know that the city have got hit, what, almost half a million dollars for, you know, got fined, because we don't, not, I mean, you know, maybe because, you know, our residents are doing, you know, their part, and maybe because, either because they don't know enough or because it's changed, whatever the reason is, I think going forward, we need to look at our, relook at our website, because that's one of the big component that we're reaching out to our resident. A lot of residents use the website, use, so, and that, that's important. So I leave it there. Thank you.
For the discussion? All right, thank you, Council.
Just briefly, I, I, I agree with you with the city's website. I think it's only a couple of years old, but it's, it's difficult, it's awkward, and it's, and I was just asking because I thought Gunther had his own site, which I think he does, LowellRecycle.org, but everything should be, you know, easily accessible through the city website, so people don't have to know that they have to go look for another one. So we need to take a serious look at, at our, our website and making sure it's not only up to date, but accessible.
Given the, the statement you make, Madam Managers, that, you know, it'd be too much for Gunther to do his work and then to try to update it as well. So it must be difficult for him, because he, he'd done a remarkable job, and, and, and to have to also update it and, and all that. It's, so maybe the system should have been a centralized system and that, that, that is very up-to-date one. Thank you.
Council Kenny?
Yeah, just, just to echo really what the city manager said, some of the information too is stale, some of it's out of date and so incorrect because of it's out of date, and I think that it is only a couple of years old, that site, and I think we got an award when we changed it over. But when you look at the sites that other communities have, theirs is much more user-friendly and, I think, more informative than ours is.
I think, and, and these are some of the things we've talked about before, you know, having a communications, at least person or, or persons, because a lot of what, you know, updating can be done through the communications department, but we don't have anybody managing the website, and so that's another real challenge. So these are things that we need to look at and bring back some recommendations and budgets with that.
If, if no one manages the website, how does stuff get on the website?
Well, it, it's decentralized, so, you know, if, if, if a department wants to post, they can post things. They will contact MIS, but it's, there is no web manager, per se. That's a challenge.
So do departments put it on themselves, then?
They do with, working with MIS, is my understanding.
Alex McGee from our office does a lot of updating, too. Sometimes the departments will send us something that needs to be put on. So it is sort of a fractured system. The department heads do have access and can update it if they want to, but we actually had been working on trying to come up with a more formal system, but there really isn't one department in charge of the overall website, which is the problem.
That's a problem.
Okay. Has it been that way since we've had that system?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Council Colway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. I, I'm wondering if it would make any sense to reach out to the university or to Middlesex Community College and, and develop an internship with, with one of those students that, they're, they're pretty good at that technology and I think get it done, and, you know, they're getting perhaps college credit for it, too. So it's a, it's a win-win for everyone. Thank you.
Council Elliot?
I think this is a good motion for a number of reasons. Having chaired the Technology Subcommittee for a number of years, I, I think the manager hit it, hit the nail on the head. I know the school department, I believe they have an individual dedicated just to the web, website development and updating, because it's, you know, we're referring, we're referring everybody to, we're putting stuff on our website, and it is, I can foresee it being almost a full-time job to be taking off and putting on additional information, and that is money well spent. Maybe we'll have to cut, you know, something else somewhere or combine a job, but I do think it's, it's a good motion that we do get a report. It's the information age. It's not, people aren't going to look through papers, they're going on web, the...
They're just using their phones.
And they're just using their phone, and if we don't have the information for them, then it's almost a disservice, whether it's, you know, from public hearings to recycling or, or whatever, you know, GIS, you name it. I mean, I consistently go to the agenda board. So I, I'm looking forward to that report, and I, I personally think that we need to dedicate an individual to, to update that information daily, you know, and it's an issue of secure access. We, we've got to have someone, you know, to monitor what's going up there and who has access to put stuff up. So I look forward to the report and what improvements we can make.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have a motion by Council Cirillo, request city manager hire replacement for the vacant position of an administrative assistant at the customer service station in the lobby of City Hall. In your second, by Council Kennedy, Council Cirillo?
Yes. Could I please make changes to the wording if there's no objection? I would like to request that the city manager provide a report on hiring a full-time permanent replacement for the position of the customer service station in the lobby of City Hall.
I second that.
Thank you, Council Noon. And that's, that's my motion. Thank you. I'm all set.
Council Elliot?
Could you tell me what we've done in the past? Is the person stationed out there? I just don't know all the particulars. Are they stationed out there all day? Or I know I've seen, it used to be Shawna, who's now the neighborhood person. Were they out there? I know for a long time, we just got volunteers, and maybe that didn't work out or not.
So it, it, it did operate with volunteers in the past, and then there was a period where, where Shawna was hired to be out there, which was a full-time position. When I came, there were a number of vacant positions we have not been filling, not just in the manager's office, but in, in other departments as well. Shawna Forsier, who's doing a great job, came into the manager's office and started as the neighborhood liaison in the evenings, and so, and, and working with the neighborhoods and also doing work in the office. We then worked with, and I'll give this all in a report to the council, Susan Lemay, through the volunteer program of retirees as well as veterans who are trying to work off, provide volunteer work for their, to work off their tax bills, and Shawna would train them, and that's worked pretty well, having, having people staff that. Now, obviously, they work off their tax bill, and then we train someone else, and, and we also have had, you know, based on that, we are also looking to some other options for volunteers where they are trained. We will, we intend to reach out. We, we have an intern who can fill in, but working with some of the, the students at the college and, and at the university. And also, we've talked recently about reaching out to other groups in the city, whether CMAA, CBA, others who have people who may want to volunteer, either to get a tax benefit or to learn about City Hall. People who've done it seem to enjoy it. As I said, we're always there to answer any, any questions or calls, and, and so that's worked out well. It really is a budget issue, in, in, in my view, since I came in, because, you know, we have many needs, and, and so, but we can, we can provide a report. I think it's, it's a good service. I think people like to be greeted by somebody if they had a question, if they're looking for an office and the like. So we're trying to provide that and even build on it, but, but we will, we will certainly come back with a report. There's, I, I know I talked some weeks ago about coming up with perhaps a reorganization of duties and jobs out of the manager's office within the existing budget. We've held off doing that. We've held off filling things just to get us through this budget cycle.
Right. Well, I, I think that was a good report, right there. I think it was a good motion. I think it's important that if we have folks to, we have a, we have a, a table or we have a, a station there, and people should be greeted. I agree. I think people do like to be greeted, and they like to get direction. They come into City Hall, and the signage is, is, is not all that great, so it's nice to have, especially considering, you know, lots of folks come here just for the first time, and they're, they're not familiar with the building. So I think it makes sense. There are some good options in there, and, you know, you go to the hospital and you get people volunteering all the time, for a variety of reasons. So I, I think it's a good motion. I think it's a good idea to look into it and see how we can fill that space.
Thank you. Council Cirillo, Council Kennedy?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to say that I think that it's a wonderful thing that we have our elderly and our retirees volunteering to get the tax benefit. I think it's wonderful that we do have the ability for positions in City Hall for volunteers. I, I think that, that needs to be known more throughout the city. So, thank you.
Council Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I don't want to get lost. That position was just created a couple of years ago, and the primary reason, almost the sole reason, was not so that it would be nice for people to be greeted when they came in City Hall. It was because there are people in the city that don't speak English, or don't speak English very well, or speak a little English and, but don't understand how the city government works. And so for those people, they're lost if they come into City Hall. There's no reason for them to want to come in, because they, they really don't know where to go, who to speak to, or any, or, or anything else. And although there might be somebody in one department that speaks their language, they have no way of knowing that, and nobody has any way of, of, of telling them that. So that person is really there for those people primarily, so that they can function in City Hall and know where to go. That's the point of the, the position. So it really needs to be somebody who either speaks a lot of languages or knows where the people that do speak those languages work, and they should act as an ambassador for those people. There's, you know, the vast majority of people that come into City Hall speak English very well, have been here multiple times, and know exactly where to go to pay a bill or to get a, a document or anything else that they may need to do. But, so that position is for those people that don't, that aren't able to do that, that, just because they, they have a language barrier or, or even maybe a, a cultural barrier. So we should keep that in mind when we're looking to fill the position.
Yeah, and, and, and that is something that's part of their training, because they, they know exactly where the people are in the offices, close by, who can translate. That's, that's what the volunteers are, are trained to do, and, and access that person, and even have a backup person that they can check with. But you're, you're correct in terms of someone who doesn't have the English ability.
Council Cirillo?
Yes, and also have, maybe have volunteers during the extended hours, because we have, just the other week, Council Noon and I were trying to guide someone who was lost in City Hall. So if we could have the option to have volunteers during...
And we will certainly look into that. Certainly the, the veteran volunteers that we've had and the seniors have been daytime, but we will look into it Tuesday evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Next, by Council Cirillo, request city manager to provide an update to council regarding status of law market process with FEMA. Second, by Council Kennedy?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted an update for those residents who are no longer in the flood zone, who are still paying flood insurance. So I just wanted an update on that. Thank you.
Okay. Announcements? Council Elliot? Motion adjourned. Second, by Council Noon. Thank you.